Cannot compare to the glory that will be revealed to us when we see your face. To receive the approval from you is better than getting a praise from men here, which is just for a short time. But help us to build one another up in love. And as we dig in these scriptures, let us have a deeper insight of your will for us and our lives. Father, we come humbly to you because we want to know you more and more each and every day. And again, please encourage us through your spirit, guide us, strengthen us, and teach us so we may grow in your grace. Thank you for your son's sacrifice. Without him, we would be all doomed. So again, we look forward to digging these scriptures so we can get to know him and you. You deserve all the glory. Yes, sure, all the glory, Holy Spirit, all the glory. We say this humbly in the name of our Lord and Savior and our King and Creator, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, baby brother. Okay, beloved brethren, once again, I want to say good night and welcome everyone to tonight's study in the wonderful book of Luke. And we're just once again going to try to get just a, not just a heads up, but we're going to get God's point of view on life, you know, throughout the week, throughout the days, throughout our lives, where it's getting man's point of view on how things should go and how things should be. Now we want to see what God has to say about life, being that he is the creator and the sustainer of life. Let's see what he has to say about everything. And he covers everything from an ant's mole hill or from an ant's anthill to the vast universe that we live in. We're now getting God's opinion on how everything should be done according to his will. We as parents, we have households, we had our households and we want our children to do the things in our homes. When I say our homes, I'm talking about the parents and the children's home as well. We want the children to do the things in the household that'll make for them a successful tenure in the home. And with that in mind, we want to see what God has to say so we can have a successful tenure in his kingdom. So once again, beloved brethren, with that in mind, we're going to go ahead and start tonight's study. And please forgive me, just bear with me two seconds. Bear with me two seconds. Okay, my two seconds are up. So as we're bringing tonight's study to a head, we're going to take a look at some pointers. Beloved brethren, I just got to share this quote with y'all that I found, and the quote goes as follows. People would hunger for God more if they snacked on sin less. Let me repeat that. People would have a greater hunger for God if they would have snacked in less on sin. And beloved brethren, we can really look at that and take it for what it's worth. What I mean by that is this, growing up as a child, I was always, you know, mom getting dinner ready for the family. And I'd be eating chips and popcorn and ice cream and drinking soda and popsicles and all this other nonsense, which would greatly reduce my appetite for that which is healthy and wholesome, the dinner that my mom was preparing. So beloved brethren, that same application, that same application applies in life. If we spend our time snacking on sex, drugs, and rock and roll, you won't have any room, you won't have any appetite for God and his word and his things. So once again, beloved brethren, people would hunger for God more if they snacked on sin less. What a beautiful, beautiful quote. So with that in mind, I pose this question, and this is something for self-examination. The question is, how's your dietary life? Are you gobbling down sin like Adam and Eve? Or do you taste and see that the Lord is good? And beloved, let me tell y'all, he is good. So beloved brethren, if I may be allowed to encourage you, because this is self, once again, self-examination for me. When I found myself snacking less on sin, I hungered more for God. And let me tell you, he's fulfilling. And again, just to bring this illustration to a close, if I was still out there snacking on sin, believe you me, this what we're having right now would not be, at least not from brother angle, our brother Linden and my angle, because I wouldn't be allowed to partake in this. I absolutely wouldn't. So just from that alone, I enjoyed this beautiful, 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 beautiful fellowship and friendship that I'm having with y'all, because I made the conscious decision to take sin out of my diet and to include in my diet more and more of my heavenly Father. Beloved brethren, as we're looking at Luke chapter 19, verses 1 through 10, and this is speaking particularly on Zacchaeus. Beloved brethren, in all province of Rome, the officials sold to persons, and I'm paraphrasing and using a little levity with the point, to get the point across. But the Roman officials, they sold their taxes to persons like H&R Block, Jackson Hewitts, and other local collectors. And they sold to them the right to collect taxes. But these local tax constituents, such as H&R Block and Jackson Hewitts, they would perform price gouging. So with that in mind, they were charging the people exorbitant taxes. Let's just say Rome levied a 3% tax. Or H&R Block would jack that up to 15%. And that's truly robbing the people blind. So with that in mind, they were considered sinners. And the people of our Lord's day, they made this accusation concerning our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ on verse 7 of Matthew of Luke chapter 19. And when they saw it, they all murmured, saying, speaking of Jesus, that he was going to be a guest with the man that is a sinner. Now, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ saw Zacchaeus up in the tree. Now Zacchaeus, though he was a shyster, he still had a heart for God. He still had a heart for Jesus. He still had a heart for the things that was right. Because when he heard that Jesus was coming through the way, he being short in stature had to climb up of the tree. Listen to verses 3 through 5. This is speaking of Zacchaeus. And he sought to see Jesus who, he sought to see Jesus who he was and could not for the press, because he was little of stature. And he ran before and climbed up into a sycamore tree to see him, but he was surpassed that way. And when Jesus came to the place, he looked up and saw him and said, Zacchaeus, make haste, come down, for today I must abide at thy house. So we getting a picture here that Zacchaeus, so because of that, and we're going to get to this point, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is passing through Jericho. Now Jericho was considered a place of sin. And as our Lord was passing through this place of sin, Jericho, he saw Zacchaeus, and it was urgent for him to have Zacchaeus be, he to be Zacchaeus's guest and Zacchaeus's house in order to win Zacchaeus over to Christ. Now, beloved, you and I, we're passing through a Jericho-type world. Again, Jericho is favorably considered to be a place of sin, as was cursed by Joshua. So as we're placed, as we're passing through this world of sin, at Genesis chapter 3, verses 17 through 19, when God was punishing Adam and Eve for their disobedience, and he said that curse be the ground for thy sake. Well, this whole world is cursed. So as Jesus was passing through Jericho, the land of curse, he took out the time to rescue a man, Zacchaeus, from his sins. Are you and I doing the same thing? You know, there was a pastor that was saying, instead of persons complaining about their places of employment, oh, I work for MTA, or I work for the post office, or I work for McDonald's or Walmart, and I hate that place. He said, you as Christians, instead of having hatred for your place of employment, turn your place of employment into a missionary field. Use that platform that God allowed you to work there to draw others unto Christ. So beloved brethren, let's you and I adopt that attitude. And I'm not saying that any of us here hate our places of employment, whether we do or do not, but let's take advantage of where we work at to introduce Christ to those who otherwise would not be able to hear Christ if you and I were not employed in these particular secular employments. Now, just as much as Jesus loved Zacchaeus, and Zacchaeus was a rascal, Jesus also loved the rich young ruler from Mark, chapter 10, verses 17 through 30. Now, what broke Jesus's heart? Unlike what Zacchaeus did, as a rich young ruler from Mark, chapters 10, verses 17 through 30, he chose to remain with his wealth. Now, beloved brethren, as I've said in studies past, those of us who are rich, let's reconsider our position of wealth. Now Zacchaeus, he said to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, if I've stolen anything, in other words, if I've, if I've taken anything, well, instead of guessing, let's read exactly what Zacchaeus said in verse 8 of Luke chapter 19. As Zacchaeus stood and said unto the Lord, behold, Lord, the half of my goods I give to the poor. And if I've taken anything from any man by false accusation, I restore him fourfold. Now Zacchaeus was very much willing to part from his wealth. The rich young ruler, the rich young ruler in Mark, he didn't want to part from his wealth. But see, beloved, understand this, please understand this. And we have examples, we have living, breathing, well, they're not living and breathing anymore, but we have examples of that today. You should be willing to depart from your wealth. Why? Because one day, your wealth will depart from you. Now understand, Zacchaeus, he restored that which he took by fraud or evil by exorbitant or excess. But understand that Zacchaeus did not walk away from our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, broke a dirt poor. Now what I'm not encouraging us to do here is to be broke, poor, and lonely. Because you got to remember, Abraham, Solomon, King David, Joseph of Arimathea, Joseph, who was one of the 12 sons of Israel, Isaac, Jacob, all these men, Boaz, all these men that I named, they were wealthy. And they were very wealthy. As a matter of fact, Solomon was the richest man to ever live. And to this good day, there was no one that surpassed Solomon's wealth. But you have to understand that though these men had wealth against such as Abraham, wealth didn't have them. They had the insight to know that at the end of their days, at the end of their journey, they can't take it with them. Only thing they can't take with them is their relationship with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. So what I'm saying to us is this, those of us in this study tonight, we might have a healthy financial standpoint. And I mean a seriously healthy financial standpoint, where you could pretty much walk away from your job yesterday. I'm not saying to you, go out and just give all your money away and be poor. No, 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 no. But what I am saying is, use your monies wisely, help those, and within reason, who are less fortunate than you. But remember, at the end of the day, let not your wealth have you, but you have the mastery over your wealth. Beloved brethren, as we're moving on to verses 12 through 27 in Luke chapter 19, here we are confronted with the servant that a nobleman, well servants, that the nobleman had left in charge as he went away into a far country. Verses 12 and 13 of Luke chapter 19, he said, therefore, a certain nobleman went to a far country to receive for himself a kingdom and to return. And he called his ten servants and delivered unto them ten pounds, and said unto them, occupy till I come. Now, this is a parable speaking of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, who has come to this earth. Because remember, he left heaven's glory to come down to this earth to receive unto himself a kingdom. Now again, the 10 servants, remember, we come to understand and appreciate that the number 10 is a number of completion, a number of totality, a number of righteousness, divine law, responsibility, and judgment. So when the scripture says that he left in these 10 servants talents, or in this case, financial gain, understand that he left us as Christians with talents. Remember what he said in Matthew chapter 10, Matthew chapter 28. Go and make disciples of all peoples of all the nations. So our Lord left us a charge to take his money, quote unquote, not little money, but take his money and put it to use and gain interest. Now the interest that our Lord is looking for is soul. He's looking for souls to be brought into his kingdom. And we are responsible, we are responsible for bringing into our Lord souls. Now, I'm going to say this, I'm going to say kindly, but please understand what I'm saying. Everyone who calls himself a Christian, listen to me very carefully. Everyone who calls himself a Christian has the responsibility of bringing sons and daughters home to God's kingdom. Ah Scott, I don't know, I can't be a pastor or a teacher or a Bible study teacher. Okay, that's fine. Not everyone is cut out for that. But what does your life say? What is your life saying to the world that would draw them unto Christ? There's a saying, stop trying to peddle or push the Bible on me. Let me see how the Bible is lived out in your life. That's how you could win souls, by acting like the owner to whom you belong. Serve him in your, like I say, if you can't preach with your teeth, preach with your feet. Now again, in the realm of kindness, please do not say you're a Christian if you're not going to behave as such. And let me tell you this, beloved brethren, because I've been on both sides of the ledger. Being a Christian is one of the most fantastic things that I have ever been in my entire life. I'm a dad, I'm a husband, I'm an employer, I'm a citizen. And in all that, it does not top me being a Christian. Because being a Christian is one of the most beautiful, being a Christian is the most beautiful thing ever. Because being a Christian, my oldest son, he's 22, and he was about 14, he says to me one day, Dad, it seem like you love God more than you love your family. So he and I had a gentle powwow. We had a gentle back and forth. And at the end of that powwow, I said, now, Kindle, let me ask you a question. What do you think about me? He said, Dad, I think you're cool and you're top-notch and you like the coolest things since ice cream. And I said, do you think that I got that way being because of who I am or because being a Christian? He said, being a Christian. So I said, baby, you are supposed to love God even more than you love me. So I'm saying that to say this, as a Christian, you have a great responsibility, and that is to encourage and yes, influence others to come unto Christ. And again, I just don't, I don't want to dwell on this too long. But when I was in the world, I used to influence my worldly buddies, so let's get out there in sex, drugs, and rock and roll. Okay, so I was encouraging them in the realm or direction of being lost. Now I'm encouraging anyone that I see, family, friends, relatives, or concerns. My thing to them is to come and see, come and taste that the Lord is good. So again, if you're a Christian, if you're going to call yourself a Christian, live a life that reflects our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And a person might say, well, ah, that's not fair. Okay, let me just share this with you really quick. I worked for the MTA, and believe it or not, even when I punch off the clock, I still am under the microscope, believe it or not, of the MTA. And I say that to say this, if God forbid I ever get arrested and I don't let my job know, dude, I'm in trouble. Oh Scott, you off work. You was in another state. It doesn't matter. I get arrested and I don't let the MTA know about it, that would put my job in jeopardy. So I'm saying that to say this, either we're living for God and we're representing him, or we're living for the devil. I don't mean to be so blunt, but I'm trying to get this over to us that as Christians, let us live, walk, and breathe as such, because we are representing the highest, the highest in the entire universe. Now beloved brethren, understand this, as the parable helps us to appreciate that there were those, in verse 14, there were the citizens of this nobleman, and it says, listen to 14 of Luke chapter 19, but his citizens hated him and sent a message after him saying, we will not have this man reign over us. Beloved, people say the Bible is a book of fairy tales, hopeless pokes, and abracadabra. I don't believe it. It's the white man's book and blah, 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 blah. Luke was written some 2,000, nearly 2,000 years ago. Beloved brethren, here, August 10, 2024, what we just read in Luke chapter 19, verse 14, is very, very real today. Do you know how many people in the world say, ah, I'm not having God or Jesus Christ reign and rule over me? Listen to Psalms chapter 2, beloved brethren, if you, if you are able to. Turn in your Bibles to Psalms chapter 2, and what we're going to look at is verses 2. Now we'll start at Psalms 2, verses 1 through 3 of 1 through 4. Psalms 2, 1 through 4 says, why do the heathen rage, and the people imagine a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed, which is Jesus, saying, let us break their bands asunder and cast their cords away from us. He that siteth in the heavens shall laugh, the Lord shall have them in division. Now Psalm, which was written by David, goes even further back than Luke's writing. But as you can see now, we will go even further, further back. We'll go to man's dawning. And when Adam and Eve ate of the tree, they were shown that we don't want God to rule over us. So beloved brethren, whether it was at man's dawning, whether it was in the days of David, the days of Luke, or today, man do not want God ruling over them. And as verse 14 clearly says, listen again, but his citizens hated him and said, we will not have this man reign over us. Now beloved brethren, please understand this. Please understand this. Every human being, every soul belongs to the true and living God. So when the scripture says that his citizens hated him, once again, once again, this is keeping in touch, in harmony, was what found in the Bible at Ezekiel chapter 18, verse 4. And I'll read it really quick. Ezekiel chapter 18, verse 4 reads as follows. Behold, all souls are mine. All, do we understand what the word all mean? All doesn't mean some. All means all. All souls are mine, as a soul of the Father, so also the soul of the Son is mine. The soul that sinneth, it shall die. So beloved brethren, please understand that every one of us belongs to God, all of us. And we all have a responsibility to do what does say of the Lord. Now if we don't, if we don't, as we move down through Luke chapter 19, if we don't, scripture helps us to appreciate that if we do not have God and Jesus to reign over us, listen to verse 27 of Luke chapter 19. But those mine enemies which would not that I should reign over them, bring them hither and slay them before me. Ezra said from Old Testament that any soul that does not worship God shall be destroyed. Brother Scott, that's why I don't want to go to church. That's why I don't want to be a Christian. That's why I don't want to do none of this nonsense. Because you're talking crazy. You mean to tell me if I don't serve God and I don't serve Jesus Christ, that I should be destroyed? I'm not saying it. Scripture is saying, and it's true. Now hold on before you pull out your knives on me. Hold on one second. Let's say you own a company, a Fortune 400 company, a Fortune 500 company, a top-notch company. And let's say you got an employer in there, and I mean, he is off the hook. He comes to work late, he steals, he just, he's, according to this man, he'll drive your company into the ground. Will you keep him in your employ? We all know the answer to that. Now let's move towards a surround. Let's say you as a loving husband and wife, mother and father, let's say you have a child, he's off the hook. And he just won't stop, won't stop, won't stop, won't stop. No matter what you tell him, no matter what you do to him, he just, he just won't cut it out. Again, are you going to allow that child to remain in your home and badly influence the other children, brothers and sisters? Just to give you a brief example, I guess I'm letting the cat out of the bag, but I enjoy watching Snap and Dateline. And there was one episode where this son, oh my gosh, this guy was worth less. His parents bought for him an $800,000 house. It's wonderful. So as spoiled and as no good and worthless as he was, he started falling, there was, there was some kind of financial agreement, blah, 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 blah. He was starting to fall behind in the financial agreement between his parents and him. So what did he do? Instead of honoring the agreement that his parents had made for him, because beloved, an $800,000 house anywhere in America is a house that's off the hook. So what did he do as an ungrateful son? He killed both of his parents. So again, going back to what scripture is helping us to appreciate. Anyone that is not worshiping the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, let's just get it out there, you are worshiping the devil. And the devil and his demons and all of his human entities will be destroyed. Again, I gave you the illustration of you being an employer. I gave you the illustration of you being a parent. And both of those are fitting illustrations. Please, please do not call God unfair when he says that he will destroy anyone that will not serve and worship him. Because you're bringing disrepute to his name, you're giving yourself over to Satan and his demons. And rightly so, God has to remove you from his universe. And beloved brethren, verse 22 says that he was an austere man. Now beloved brethren, let's just get a brief definition of the word austere. That's A-U-S-T-E-R-E. Austere is a severe or strict in manner, attitude, or appearance. Beloved brethren, we have to understand that God, as loving as he is, yet he will put those who are rebellious under his wrath. Remember, it wasn't Satan that right, that rained down fire and sulfur upon Seton and Gomorrah. It was God himself. Remember, it wasn't Satan that destroyed the world by flood. It was God himself. And remember, in the future, who will be, we learned in Luke chapter twelve, verse five, "Who will it be that will cast wicked men into hell?" Not Satan, but God. So yes, God is loving. As a matter of fact, the very word of love is originates with God himself. But please don't get it twisted. He does not close his eyes to wrongdoing and sin. He must, he must punish and destroy sinful men, women, Satan, and his demons. Moving on to verse forty, the stones cry out. Now, throughout my tenure, there've always been a question that was asked, can God make literal stones cry out? Literal stones, you know, stones that you see, well, um, that you see on the side of the road. And again, me working in transit, um, in between the, the train tracks, they have these stones. It's like hundreds and thousands, if not millions of them. So the question's been asked, can God make those literal stones cry out? Okay. Beloved brethren, listen to the answer. Did we forget that God made dirt to walk, talk, move, breathe, think, and reason? Huh, Brother Scott? They what? What? Yes. God made dirt to walk, which I'm doing right now, talk, which I'm doing right now, move, which I'm doing right now, breathe, think, and reason. Listen to Genesis chapter two, verse seven. Genesis chapter two, verse seven, "And the Lord God formed man of the dust of the ground and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, and man became a living soul." So can God cause literal stones, the stones that we used to, as little kids, um, some of the older ones here in the group, used to take those stones and, 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 uh, throw them, that they would skip across a lake? Can God make that literal stone that was skipping across a lake speak, cry out, talk? The answer to that is yes, because you, me, and the whole entire world, he made dirt to walk, breathe, talk, think, act, reason. Now, beloved brethren, in a figurative way of speech, remember, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, he's called the rock. This is found in First Corinthians chapter ten, verse four. He's called the cornerstone, which is First Peter chapter two, verse six. He's called the branch, Zechariah chapter three, and, uh, verse eight, in Zechariah chapter six, verse twelve. He's also called the true vine, John chapter fifteen, verses one and five. Now again, while this applies as a figure of speech to stonewarded people, listen to Hebrews chapter three, verse eight. "Pardon not your hearts as in the provocation, uh, provocation, in the day of temptation in the wilderness." It also carries with it the application of literal stones. Yes, literal stones that we just, um, got a chance of, just got to discussing. Remember, you and I, and I'm not being mean, I'm, I'm being realistic, you and I are dirt. When we come to the end of our days, and these bodies stop moving, breathing, living, when we're buried into the ground, you come and, and let me be more personal, because I don't wanna offend anyone here. If after I've died and gone, you come dig up my grave a hundred years from now, you'll see nothing but a, a, a box full of dirt. Listen to Habakkuk chapter two, verse eleven. "For the stone shall cry out of the wall, and the beam out of the timber shall answer it." So beloved brethren, please understand that yes, while the stones that will cry out takes on a, a, a figurative application, it also has a literal one. Listen to this beautiful poetic reading from Psalms, chapter one forty-eight, verses one through fourteen, and I'll go through that, uh, uh, quickly. Psalms one forty-eight, verses one through fourteen, "Praise ye the Lord. Praise ye the Lord from the heavens. Praise him in the heights. Praise him, all his angels. Praise him, all his hosts. Praise you him, sun and moon. Praise you him, stars of light. Praise him, heaven of heavens, you waters that be above the heavens. Let the name of the Lord be praised, for he commanded, and they were created. He hath also established them forever and ever. He made a decree, which shall not pass." Verse seven, "Praise the Lord from the earth, you dragons and all deeps. Fire, hail, snow, vapor, stormy wind fulfilling his words. Mountains, hills, fruitful trees, cedars, beasts, cattle, creeping things, flying fowls, kings of the earth, people, princes, judges of the earth, young men, maidens, old men, children. Let them all praise the name of the Lord, for his name alone is excellent. His glory is above the heaven and earth. He also exalted the horn of his people. The praise of all his saints, even of the children of Israel, a people near unto him. Praise ye the Lord." Beloved brethren, let us not forget that God caused a one-time event in the history of the world. Nothing like it happened before that, and nothing like that happened during that time, and nothing like that happened afterward. God made a donkey to speak. There was nothing beyond the glory of our God. Remember Genesis chapter four, verse ten, where God said to Cain, "What have you done? The voice of your brother's blood cries unto me from the ground." Beloved brethren, please understand that God has the ability, the power, and the right to do all of these wonderful things. Verses forty-one through forty-four of Luke chapter nineteen. This is the second recording that we have of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ weeping, weeping, weeping over his beautiful people in his beautiful city of Jerusalem. And why is he weeping over Jerusalem? Because he foresees their destruction that is going to happen to them in A.D. seventy. Forty years after Jesus said these words, they came true. In sixty-six A.D., the Jews revolted against Roman control. Three years later, Titus, son of the emperor Vespasian, was sent to crush the rebellion. Roman soldiers attacked Jerusalem and broke through the northern wall, but still couldn't take the city. Finally, they laid siege to it, and in seventy A.D., they were able to enter the severely weakened city and burn it. In that event, six hundred thousand Jews were killed during Titus' onslaught. Beloved brethren, all of that could have been avoided if they would just have accepted Jesus Christ as their reigning king and as their sovereign. Let's move to an even bigger picture. And y'all, y'all. Y'all have to, um, y'all have to forgive your brother. He gotta forgive you. Moving on to a larger picture, yes, God will destroy scores of human beings because they refuse to bow their knee and confess with their tongue the Lord Jesus Christ. And let me tell y'all, it hurts. It hurts. So if you have the heart of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and the heart of God, you'll weep as well. Because beloved brethren, we're all human beings. We're all men and women. If it wasn't for the mercy and grace of God, we could be those ones who would be brought to the mast and slain. I told y'all the story one time when I was a mailman, and I was delivering mail, and I saw this dog on the porch. And I had my two cans of mace ready to spray him, because I thought he was going to attack me. So I was ready to defend myself, bring hurt unto that dog. But when that dog got up and he started walking away, he only had three legs. His last leg was cut clean off. It broke my heart. I was so ashamed that I even thought to bring harm to him. So I'm saying that to say this, beloved brethren, if you have the heart of God, and if you have the heart of Jesus Christ, to know that even your enemy is going to be lost in eternity, in eternity in hell, it has to, it has to break your heart. It really has to break your heart. It really, 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 really does. Moving on to verses forty-five and forty-six. Just bear, bear with me, beloved. Moving on to verses forty-five and verse forty-six. "Jesus went into the temple and began to cast out them that sold therein, and them that bought, saying unto them, 'It is written, My house is a house of prayer, but you have made it a den of thieves.'" Beloved brethren, let's see what our Father did to those in, in Old Testament times who desecrated and dishonored his house of worship. Jeremiah chapter twenty-six, verse six, "And then I will make this house like Shiloh and will make the city a curse to all nations of the earth." Jeremiah seven, twelve to fifteen. "But go you now unto My place, which was in Shiloh, where I set My name at the first, and see what I did to it for the wickedness of my people, Israel. And now, because you have done all these works, saith the Lord, and I spake unto you, rising up early and speaking, but ye heard not, and I called you, but you answered not. Therefore, what I do unto this house, which is called by My name, wherein you trust, and unto the place which I gave to you and to your fathers, as I have done to Shiloh. And I will cast you out of My sight, as I have cast out all your brethren, even the whole seat of Ephraim." Psalm seventy-eight, sixty, and sixty-two. "So that he forsook the tabernacle of Shiloh, the tent which he had placed among men. He gave his people also unto the sword, and was angry with his inheritance." Beloved, God's house is to be a house of worship, praising, healing. Anything, anything, anything outside of that will merit his just wrath. I went one time, I'm not even gonna get into that. Just understand that trading, buying, selling, all that nonsense which is going on in a lot of these churches is absolutely unacceptable by God. Now, please, do not misunderstand. If a person has a church, let's just say, my baby brother Landon, let's say if he has a church. I'm talking about a little church or building. It's understood that if he's renting it, the rent has to be met each month. If he's owning it, the mortgage has to be met. But here regardless, you have utilities and the upkeep of the church. If money is being brought to the church for that, fine. If money is being brought to the church for my brother Landon, and I know he will cut me off a little bit. To be driving around in a Rolls, in a Rolls Royce, and you driving around in Jaguar, don't do it. Um, my wife is telling me that's his pastor in the south, he's getting a divorce. Um, he, he has a one point five million dollar house, and his congregation put him in that house. Things like that, God absolutely founds upon. Moving to chapter twenty, verses one through eight, beloved brethren, again, the practicality of the Bible. These religious leaders was trying to trap our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Beloved, when you have persons coming to you with certain questions and respond, and demand for responses, beloved, you don't always have to answer their questions. Because nine times out of ten, they're not asking you these questions so they can draw near to God. They're attempting to trap you. Listen to verse two. Listen to verse two of Luke chapter twenty. "And spake unto them, saying, Tell us, by what authority doest thou these things? For who is it that give thee this authority?" Now, Lord and Savior Jesus Christ says, "I will ask you one thing, and you answer me. The baptism of John, was it from heaven or from men?" And they reasoned with themselves. If we say from heaven, he will say, "By then, believe ye, I am not." But if we say of men, all the people who stone us, will they be persuaded that John was a prophet? And they answered that they could not tell from where it was. And Jesus said unto them, "Neither tell I you, by what authority I do these things." Again, beloved brethren, when persons bring to us questions, you don't have to answer every question that's brought to you, because a lot of times, people that are asking for sincerity so they can draw closer to God, they're asking these things in order to trap you up. Verses nine through sixteen, again, we have another illustration of the owner of the vineyard. Now, let's just get a description of all, uh, parties concerned. The owner of the vineyard is the Lord God himself. The vineyard is Israel. Listen to Isaiah chapter five, verse seven. "For the vineyard of the lord of hosts is the house of Israel, and the men of Judah his present plant. And he looked for judgment, but behold oppression; for righteousness, but behold a cry." Back to Luke chapter twenty, verses nine through sixteen, "The husbandmen are the religious leaders." Now, this is something very, very interesting, very unique. Listen to this description of, of, of what our Lord and Savior is concerning, um, saying servants. Listen to verses ten through twelve. "And at the season he sent the servant to the husbandmen, that they should give him of the fruit of the vineyard; but the husbandmen beat him, and sent him away empty. And again he sent another servant, and they beat him also, and entreated him shamefully, and sent him away empty, verse twelve. And again he sent a third, and they wounded him also, and cast him out." As I was doing my study and my researches, going through my different commentaries, I was helped to appreciate that the reason why our Lord had classified those servants in verses ten through twelve, one servant, another servant, then a third servant, those all represents the prophets, the priests, the apostles, and we're in line with the apostles. And what I mean by we're in line with the apostles, I'm not saying that any of us are apostles here. But I'm saying that we're taking on the apostles', um, message, which is the message from our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and we're carrying that forth to the people. So again, beloved brethren, the only, I might be gonna use the term original, the only apostles that has ever graced this earth were the twelve apostles during our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ's day. And Paul was chosen to be apostle by the Lord Jesus Christ himself. And again, one of the characteristics of an actual factual apostle is that he had to be chosen, handpicked by the Lord Jesus Christ himself. So when I say that we're taking on the, 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 the messages of the apostles, but I'm not saying that any of us here are apostles, but we are our servants like the apostles. And I just call myself, and, and I would just advise you also, just call yourself a regular Christian. If you're a Bible teacher, a pastor, or preacher, that's fine, but none of these, um, false titles of prophets and apostles, because there aren't any. There aren't any today. All you have is Bible proclaimers, teachers, and preachers. Verses seventeen and eighteen, beloved brethren, when our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ came two thousand years ago, even through today, he's allowing us the full opportunity to fall upon him and be broken. Listen to Psalms thirty-four, verse eighteen. "The Lord is near unto them that are of a broken heart, and saves such that be of a contrite spirit." Verses fifty-one, I'm sorry, Psalms fifty-one, seventeen. "The sacrifices of God are a broken spirit, a broken and a contrite heart, O God, thou wilt not despise." Beloved brethren, please understand that we have to be broken before God. We have to be. And what I mean by that is this, we have to break this stubborn, worldly, godless will that we have and allow our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ to come in and to make us fit for his kingdom. Because if we don't, if we don't, listen to Second Thessalonians chapter one, verse seven through nine. Second Thessalonians chapter one, verse seven through nine. "And to you who are troubled, rest with us, when the Lord Jesus shall be revealed from heaven with his mighty angels, in flaming fire taken vengeance on them that know not God, and that obey not the gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ, who shall be punished with everlasting destruction from the presence of the Lord and from the glory of his power." Psalms two says, "Serve the Lord. Fear." Rejoice with trembling, kiss the sun. Speaking of Jesus, lest he be angry, and you perish from the way, and his wrath is kindled but a little. Beloved brethren. If we're not broken before Jesus. We do not fall upon that stone and get broken, that stone will fall upon us and crush us to powder. When our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ comes the second time. In the future. He's coming wielding a sword to put down all rebellion. So you might have a person that say, Brother Scott, I don't like, I don't like your Bible studies. Beloved brethren, I don't like them either. I love them. You want to know why? Because they keep you from the wrath of the lamb. From the judgment of God. And from the fire of hell. Verses twenty-two through twenty-five, beloved brethren. Our God is the awesome God. Because God nor Jesus has ever told us to disregard or abandon the laws of the land. Never. Listen to his own words. As we read verses twenty to twenty-five. Let me, um, shave it down a little bit. And go to verse twenty-four. Jesus said, show me a penny, whose image and superscription is on it? They answered and said Caesar's. Verse twenty-five, and Jesus said to them, render therefore unto Caesar the things which belongs to Caesar. But you render unto God the things that belong to God. Beloved brethren. Peter goes on to say in Acts, we would rather obey God as ruler than men. Obey the laws of the land so long as they do not conflict with the laws of God. Jesus in this is not telling us to not pay our taxes, as some of these shyster churches are doing. Not paying their taxes, robbing the people coming and going, left and right, up and down. But what Jesus is saying is you do the things that a law-abiding citizen should do. You obey the law. The speed limit says fifty-five, do fifty. The right, if the light is red, you stop. If Walmart say, don't steal, then leave it alone. The scripture says thou shalt not kill, then, I mean, I'm sorry, if the law says you shouldn't kill, then you shouldn't kill. Jesus is never deterring us from the laws of the land. But you also have a responsibility. To honor the laws of God. The laws of the land, they vary, even here in the United States of America. Laws vary from state to state. Say for example, in the state of Florida, you can carry a gun. Every province of Florida, you can carry a gun. Not so in the state of New York. So once again. Even in the United States of America, each province, each section, whether north, south, east, west, New York, New Jersey, Connecticut. They all have their different laws. But the laws of God is universal. So if you're an African Christian, a Jamaican Christian, a Chinese Christian, an American Christian, a West Indian Christian. You're all following what does say of the Lord. But he is definitely telling you to obey your local laws. But you also, like he beautifully said, render to Caesar the things that belong to Caesar. And render to God the things that belong to God. Verses twenty-eight to thirty-six. Beloved brethren, this is speaking of the seven brothers that had one wife. Let me tell you a little story that I heard behind it. There was this pastor was telling of this account, and the count for verses twenty-eight to thirty-six is speaking of, um, this one wife. Who married seven brothers, and the count went as follows. The pastor was saying, instead of asking whose wife she'll be in eternity, the question should have been, how did all seven brothers die at her hands? And let's just get a quick picture. Let us get a, um, a quick picture of that. Verse twenty-nine, they were therefore seven brothers, and the first took the wife and died without children, and the second took of the wife and died, third took her and died. All the way through to seven. So the pastor was saying, instead of worrying about whose wife she's going to be in eternity, the question should be. How did all brothers, how did all seven brothers die at her hands? And one after the other kept marrying her and marrying, marrying, marrying. And beloved, since, since I'm on a roll for a joke, I guess you probably say, Brother Scott, during these studies, you, 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 you laugh, you cry. You're taking us on a roller coaster. So let me take y'all on the joyous roller coaster. Um, there was a joke in concerning, this is, this is actually a biblical law. That says if a man marries a woman and he dies childless, that if he has brothers. Each of the brother is supposed to marry that woman and carry on seed for that brother to the next generation. So the joke went as follows. When, when the oldest brother brought home a wife, all the brothers had to look her over. Because they had to say, they had this, their, uh, thing was, we got to make sure that she looked good enough for all of us to want to marry. Because if she's not a looker, then older brother, when you die, that's it, we're going to kick her out. So again, beloved brethren, uh, to get into the, to, to, to the seriousness of it. In the next life, there won't be any marrying, marriages, or any of that. In the next life. Let's just say, for example, my wife and I, we will not be husband and wife, we will be brother and sister. And as we go throughout eternity, there will be no men marrying women, there will be no women marrying men. Again, listen to scripture, listen to scripture speaks. Verse thirty-four. And Jesus answered, and said unto them, the children of this world marry and are given in marriage, but they which shall be accounted worthy to obtain that world. And the resurrection from the dead neither marry, nor are given in marriage. Verse thirty-six, neither can they die anymore, for they are equal unto the angels, and are the children of God, being the children of the resurrection. So again, beloved brethren, please understand this, that in the next life, there will be no one marrying. Let's just say a husband and wife are alive at the time of Jesus's return. And they are worthy to go into paradise or into heaven. They will enter into paradise and heaven. Again, let me use, let me, let me personalize it. Let's just say my wife and I are alive at the time of Jesus's return. And we are both found favorable in God's eyes, we will enter into paradise as brother and sister, no longer husband and wife. Brothers and sisters, verses forty-five through forty-seven. Those who are involved in, let's just say, um, giving out the word. If they do it with subterfuge, they will have, listen to verse seven, the greater damnation. So let me just put it out there. The Creflo Gollans, the TD Jakes, the Joel Osteen's, the Joyce Myers. And all these other false teachers, prophets and apostles, they will be met with a greater damnation in hell. Because they are misleading people and they are misrepresenting God and Jesus Christ. So beloved, if any of you here are going to be in the ministry. If you're going to be a Bible teacher, then you had better come correct. And that by sticking to the script. As my baby brother Linden says, stick to the script. Brother Linden.
Good. Alright, that was a good one. Uh. You know, um. I've often wondered. Why the world is falling in God's eyes. And we see. World without love. Is a world that's getting darker and darker. As we approach. Luke chapter twenty, Luke chapters twenty-one and twenty-two. We see that, um. This is. Nearly the climax of, uh, our. Uh, mission. And purpose. So we're going to dig in. And we're going to see some hidden jewels and some hidden mysteries. Uh, revealed. And we see that a lot is at stake. We were never taught that Jesus faced many murder threats. We watched a film, I mean. We see the passion of Christ, but they never really focused on his, uh, his ministry. And, uh, he had. Death threats. Ejection. And. So many trials that he encountered. So, um. We're going to read. About generosity. We're going to see what makes somebody rich. And as, uh, discussed earlier. You know. Jesus knows our hearts. Zacchaeus gave half his possessions, but Jesus didn't demand him to give, forfeit all his possessions. So. He's the Lord, he's the, the living word. And we, we, we know that according to the scriptures. You know, the word is sharper than a sword, it can read the minds of hearts. So. We realize that wherever your treasure is, there your heart will be also. And each and every day, we're learning that our hearts need to be fixed on the living treasure. Jesus Christ. And we see that, um. Explained. In Hebrews chapter eleven. And just to let you know, I often wondered, what is, what is, what, what are riches to God? What are the jewels? In God's eyes? It's just mainly. The character of who he is. I mean, we can go on and on. In Job chapter twenty-eight, we realize that the richest that God holds in high esteem. Is not even mentioned in the world. And that's called wisdom and understanding. Wisdom is the fear of God. Understanding is shunning evil. But those treasures are overlooked. People look for diamonds and rubies and, and, uh, platinum and money. But what? Makes somebody rich in God's eyes? Clearly. We've learned it's not, that, you, being rich is not measured by the possessions you possess. And yes, as mentioned before, Ki- King Solomon was richest king ever to exist. Yet he says to, um, his followers. I say to you that. Not even Solomon, in all his splendours, is arrayed like one of these. You see, when we are. When we are in Christ, we. Are arrayed with immortality, we are arrayed with all the traits of God's character. That's rich. Life does not consist in the abundance of possessions. But yes, if you do have understanding and wisdom like Job. And these possessions that you have are used to help others. Then that's the beauty of being rich. The beauty of being rich is thinking about others, putting others for. So let's, um, go to Luke chapter twenty-one. And. But before I, I, I lose my train of thought, but I want to let you see. That the Egyptians, they thought that, you know, they can have their riches and. When they're buried with their riches in the afterlife, according to their belief, which is delusion, they thought that they can bring their riches with them. Their treasures. I'm going to read briefly just to encourage you, you know, I'm, I'm not knocking anybody who, who is trying to get, uh, you know. If, if it's God's will and you prayed for a career to be a doctor or a lawyer. As long as you don't think that these, these positions give you permanent identity. Your permanent identity. Lies within our Father. And it's good to bear fruit that lasts, meaning if you have a permanent id- identity, you are actually investing into an, any everlasting cause. Not a temporary one. Alright, I'm, I'm going to read to you Hebrews chapter eleven, and it talks about, um, about Moses. And he could have been. Among one of the richest. Kings. Or according to the Egyptian hierarchy, he would be, he would have been Pharaoh. But let's read this here. Hebrews chapter eleven, verse twenty-three. And then I'll go and proceed further in, uh, Luke chapter twenty-one. By faith. Moses's parents hid him for three months. After he was born, because they saw he was no ordinary child. And they were not afraid of the king's edict. By faith, Moses, when he had grown up, refused to be a Pharaoh's daughter. He chose to be mistreated along with the people of God, rather than to enjoy the fleeting pleasures of sin. He regarded disgrace for the sake of Christ as of greater value. Than the treasures of Egypt, because he was looking ahead to his reward. As we know. His reward is Jesus Christ. The mystery, mystery treasure. The hope of glory thriced in you. So when we have, when Christ is in our bosom, when he's in. We will be filled with fountains of wisdom. And we can teach. Others, so they can be freed from the snares of sin and death. And when we value God and only God. Nothing else matters. There's no idolatry. That's where sin. Has come into this. Creation. Alright. Luke chapter twenty-one. Luke chapter twenty-one. As Jesus looked up. He saw the rich putting their gifts into the temple treasury. He also saw a poor widow put in two very small copper coins. Truly, I tell you, he said, this poor widow has put in more than all the others. All these people gave their gifts out of their wealth, but she, out of her poverty, put in all she had to live on. Now I know. It's been me. Well, you know, Lyndon, if you're in the financial position, you can help others, you just got to, you know. Establish yourself first. Then you can help others. But you know, each and every day. But you know, each and every day, I I try to reach uh greater financial means. It never, it never really happens, and I know that's an illusion. We can never be in a problem-free life. Getting be- being debt-free, that's fine and dandy, but how long will that last? We are living in a fallen world and I know what's really measured is when we make that sacrifice. We put others first. And um what's considered worship is living a sacrificial life. And I know it's not easy. People take advantage of you, people try to outslick you, they try to be, you know, they try to take a uh an arm when you give an inch. I've heard that many times. But if we make that lo- that lit, we are a living sacrifice. And that's what is true worship to God. And we see that exemplified on the cross. He made, he made himself a living sacrifice. He healed without a cross. He put others first. And uh I I I'm gonna read that to you. Um we've seen Romans, chapter 12. Romans, chapter 12, verse 1. Now, listen. Again, we we have been taught, well, get yourself an education, get a career, go after the desires of your heart, live like everybody else, paying your taxes. And if somebody who's poor comes to you, hey, you know what, I made it. The the reason why you're than predict, you are in the predicament you're in is because you weren't responsible. So why should I help you? I worked hard to get to where I am. It is written, therefore I urge you, brothers and sisters, in view of God's mercy, to offer your bodies as a living sacrifice, holy and pleasing to God. This is your true and proper worship. Worship is, I wanna be like you. Praise is appreciating what you do for me. Now let's go to again, we've heard, we read scripture before, and I love reading it. Acts, chapter 10, verse 35. And clearly, the Holy Spirit, Yeshua, talks about this truth here. Acts, chapter 20, verse 35. My mistake. And there we read again. It is more blessed to give than to receive. We read the 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 most, one of the most popular verses, John, chapter 3, verse 16. So for God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son. Lyndon, every time I extend loving kindness, I get evil in return. Well, you know, that's part of the commission. We are going to be wounded. We are soldiers risking to make our lives a living sacrifice. And I'm not saying that you don't use wisdom and discretion, of course. Jesus clearly tells us not to give pearls of swine and 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 try to talk to people and try to beat them over the head with the jewels he's given us. No. Yet we are focusing on being alight, making ourselves a living sacrifice. And the widow gave all she had. But in the world's um stand, according to worldly standards, that's just two little mites. But that is rich to God. Can I be poor and be rich? How's that possible? Let's go to 2 Corinthians, chapter 8, verse 9. Now, we've, we 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 know the Christmas carols and the birth of Jesus and clearly Joseph and Mary, when they received the edict to go back to their um hometown so that they can be taxed properly. Went to Bethlehem and they couldn't find a place to live, a place to stay in to give birth to our Savior. And let's read. 2 Corinthians, chapter 8, verse 9. There we read. For you know the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, that though he was rich, yet for your sake he became poor, so that you through his poverty might become rich. What are you talking about? Being rich in the character of God. Being rich in loving kindness, gentleness, goodness, long-suffering, self-control. The fruit of the Spirit, that it makes you rich. When we go to Revelation, chapter 9, Jesus is talking to John. And he's telling him to write down what the Spirit is saying to the churches. And this is what he says. I know your afflictions and your poverty, yet you are rich. You are rich, they are rich in generosity. That is rich. And I'm gonna say I'm poor in eating, in spirit. And I'm learning to give. I'm learning to make my life a living sacrifice. And yes, I I'm I'm asking the Holy Spirit, I'm asking God, help me look past my wounds so I can see the joy that you see in helping others when it hurts. I'm not there yet. And I'm striving. But now I see more and more why God holds this in high esteem to witness a widow. Now, at that time, if you're a widow, that's, that's pretty, you're pretty much rejected because you don't have a husband to provide for you. You have no financial means. You have no, you have no, you have no foundation, no, no, no board, noth- nothing. So if you're a widow, nobody's gonna think someone valuable, you're rejected. You have no means of security according to the worldly standards. And another verse that I love to show, to encourage us that in James, chapter 2, verse 5. Listen, my dear brothers and sisters, has not God chosen those who are poor in the eyes of the world to be rich in faith? And to inherit the kingdom of God he promised those who love him? So faith weighs more value than silver and gold that perishes in fire. You see, that's why the enemy is always constantly attacking you, attacking you, attacking you, trying to say, listen, God, I know he values the things of this world more than you. If I let him fall short here, I let her fall short here, I bet you they'll curse in your face. Because they love possessions and beauty more than you. Because that's exemplifies me. So the more they reject you and and put possessions in high esteem more than you, they're worshiping me because I hold my beauty and possessions more than you. They don't like you. Oh, they just, they just love you because of what you've done to bless them. And we've seen that in the story of Job. And I know it's difficult. You know, as humans, we want convenience, we 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 want things done in order. Okay, then, God, I I can serve you. Oh, if I have this amount of money in the bank, okay, then I can help somebody out there. But God is looking for someone. Saying, man, I I got five dollars to my name. You know what? I got a house. I see you out there struggling out there and you have no means. You have no shelter. You know what? Here's five dollars. That's Now, we're gonna see in verses, um as we read further, we're gonna talk about rejection for his name's sake. And I'm gonna go over some verses with you. So I know this Christian walk is is not easy, but we're gonna see that the treasure we are looking for is gonna be all worth it. It's gonna be all worth it. To be rich in God's eyes, not in the, not, don't, don't be rich in the world's eyes. Because these riches are temporary. And they are meaningless, meaningless if you do not have understanding. Again, understanding is shunning evil. Oh, my God is good. Let's get, let's get down to it. Now we talked about the widow. Let's go further down. Some of the disciples were remarking about how the temple was adorned with beautiful stones and with gifts dedicated to God. But Jesus said, as far as what you see here, the time will come when not one stone will be left on another. Every one of them will be thrown down. Teacher, they asked, when will these things happen? And what will be the sign that will, um that they are about to take place? He replied, watch out that you are not deceived. For many will come in my name claiming I am he, and the time is near. Do not follow them. Okay, so we we've seen Jim Jones, I I keep, I keep mixing up that name. Jim Jones and Diana. We see Dave Koresh. We see many people claiming that they are the Christ. And then um unfortunately, um another example, the time is near. We see that it's um that was uh declared by Harold Camping in 2011. And ever since that, you know, Family Radio um went down. I don't know if they are still on air, but it's been a long time since they'd been on ninety five, ninety four point seven FM radio. Um but we see that these are the signs. Do not follow them. And when you hear of wars and uprisings, do not be frightened. These things must happen first, but the end will not come right away. Then he said to them, nation will rise against nation and kingdom against kingdom. There'll be great earthquakes, famines and pestilences in various places and fearful events and great signs from heaven. But before all this, they will seize you and persecute you. They will hand you over to the synagogues and put you to prison. And you'll be brought before kings and governors and all on account of my name. Let's just read about the name. And people love to use this term political, politically correct. Everybody has their so-called religious views. But no one wants to ever be bold. So declare that's wrong. Well, I gotta be politically correct because it might offend somebody. Who's out there who are raking families and destroying children. I don't wanna offend them. But we see that John the Baptist was bold enough to go to King Herod and say, hey, you're committing adultery, that's your brother's wife. And I know it can be risky. It can be fearful. Wow, John the Baptist, the cousin of Lord Jesus Christ, got beheaded for being bold. For the most part, the majority of the prophets will don't. Some have been banished like John and Patmos. But the disciples that followed Jesus, they lost their lives. And I, and I want to just let you know that for God's name's sake, the transformation is fly. And and I know it's not easy to think of it that way. But to honor the Lord is that we put away these grave clothes so we can receive wedding clothes. The moment, the moment we, we the moment we realize that God is crucifying this body of death that we are in right now, we're going to receive a resurrected body. And by faith, we will understand that. So yes, it's gonna be brutal, it's gonna be painful. I mean, nobody wants to say, oh, yes, I I wanna be out there and killed. But let's look at, let's look at these few um verses to just let you understand. If you really, really want me, Jesus Christ says, if you really say that you are after me. I know we've gone over these verses, but it's it's a good reminder, it helps me, it reminds me. And um you know, the people who are gonna put you in prison, they're gonna think that they're doing God's will. If they kill you, they think they're doing, they're giving God, um they're doing God, um they're giving um God the glory and honor for destroying you. So let's go to Matthew, chapter 10, verse 37. Matthew chap- chapter 10, verse 37 through 39. And say, the stakes are high. Well, the stakes are very high. But keep that in mind, but it's all going to be worth it. Matthew, chapter 10, verse 37 through 39. Anyone who loves their father or mother more than me is not worthy of me. Anyone who loves their son or daughter more than me is not worthy of me. Whoever does not take up their cross and follow me is not worthy of me. Whoever finds their life will lose it. And whoever loses their life for my sake will find it. Let's go to Micah, chapter 7, verse four, um, chapter 7, verses four through sev- um, four through six. It's written, the day of, the day God visits you has come. The day your watchman sounded alarm, and now is the time of your confusion. Do not trust a neighbor. Put no confidence in a friend, even with the woman who lies in your Even with the woman who lies in your embrace, guard the words of your lips. Son disowns his father. A daughter rises up against her mother. A daughter. Her mother-in-law. A man's enemies are the members of his own household. But as to me, I watch and hope for the Lord. I wait for God, my Savior. My God will hear me. We're gonna take a little. Trip back to Luke, chapter fourteen, verse twenty six. Luke, chapter ten, fourteen, verse twenty six. And we're gonna see. What's at stake? It is written. If anyone comes to me and does not hate father and mother, wife and children, brothers and sisters, yes, even their own life. Such a person cannot be my disciple. I'm not saying I'm gonna leave my family. But just like the rich young ruler. If I put me above God, that's a problem. He comes first because without him, I would not have a family in the first place. Humans say family comes first. God comes first. Without God and without his perfect, his protection and his provision, my family would not be together. It's by God's grace. But for some, some have left fields, some have left families. Some of them. Hate their own lives. And we need to understand. What's at risk? What's the cost? Am I willing to lose my life? To gain eternal life? Peter. Was martyred. We know that Paul, some say he got beheaded, some say he died in prison. Andrew. James, the brother of Jesus, was put to the sword. So much is at stake. But, but more and more, as we take this journey, we realize that life without Christ is meaningless. And we are the walking dead if we're not born again. Walking wand, you know, wandering the earth restless. That's not the Zoe life. And as Paul says. To live as Christ and to die as game. So let's go to, uh, let's reach further and then we're gonna go about being prayerful and, and being on watch. Be on guard. And then we're gonna start to, uh. Go to, uh, Judas, chapter twenty two, and we're gonna see a lot of, uh, prophecies being fulfilled there. So let's just, uh, go, um. We're going to, uh, leave, um, we're going to actually continue where we left off. All right, so before, so before kings on account of my name, and so you will bear testimony to me. But make up your mind not to worry beforehand. How you will defend yourselves, for I will give you words and wisdom and none of your adversaries will be able to resist or contradict. You'll be betrayed even by parents, brothers and sisters, relatives and friends. And they will put some of you into death. So as we read earlier about. He who loves mother, brother, fa- father, sister more than me is not worthy of me. Well, here we see, and it's the truth. Everyone will hate you because of me. But not a hair of your head will perish. Stand firm and you will win life. When you see Jerusalem being surrounded by armies, you will know that its desolation is near. As we see. Hamas, Iran, everybody's just surrounding this little small country called Israel. I don't even know if it's the size of New Jersey. So we see that. This prophecy. Is nearly fulfilled. But this is a time of punishment and fulfillment of all written. How dreadful it'll be in those days for pregnant women and nursing mothers. There'll be great distress in the land and watch. And wrath against this, this people. They will fall by the sword and will be taken as prisoners to all the nations. Jerusalem will be trampled on by the Gentiles until the time of the Gentiles are fulfilled. There'll be signs in the sun, moon and stars. On the earth, nations will be in anguish and perplexity at the wrong and tossing of the sea. People will faint from terror, apprehensive of what is coming on in the world. For the heavenly bodies will be shaken. At that time, they will see the Son of Man coming in a cloud with power and great glory. When these things begin to take place, stand up, lift up your heads, because your redemption is drawing near. He told them this parable. Look at the fig tree and all the trees. When they sprout leaves, you can see for yourselves and know that summer is now. And you know, I was gonna touch on that, but Micah's a very rich chapter. Micah, chapter seven. It talks about how, you know, when Jesus, um. Cursed the fig tree. Because there were no grapes on the, uh, on the big tree, and we see that, you know, sometimes our, our own righteousness bears no fruit. And, um, if there's no fruit on the vine, it's, it, you know, that's all that God is looking for. And it's, it's clear when you see. These scriptures. Prepare me while I get to Micah, chapter seven, and you'll see. I am, this is, this is the Lord speaking in the Old Testament, so you can see fruit, okay? Example. Judges are corrupt. People give them money on, under the table. Criminals are acquitted because of technicalities or because of bribes. So this is in Micah, chapter seven, verse one. What misery is mine? I'm like one who gathers some, some of fruit at the gleaning of the vineyard. There's no cluster of grapes to eat, none of the earth will crave. The faithful have been swept from the land. Not one upright person remains. Everyone lies in wait to shed blood. They hunt each other with nuts. Both hands are skilled in doing evil. The ruler demands gifts. The judge accepts bribes. The powerful dictate what they desire. They all conspire together. The best of them is like a briar, the most upright worse than the thorn's edge. So we see that. People taking bribes. I even go to this extreme, people trying to have congestion pricing. So they can generate more money than, you know, and it just goes on and on. And on and on. Where are the grapes? Where are the fakes? I don't see any. That's what the Lord is saying. Even so, when you see these things happening, you know that the kingdom of God is near. Truly, I tell you, this generation will certainly not pass away until all these things have happened. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will never pass away. Of your hearts. Be, be careful, or your hearts will be weighed down with carousing drunkenness and anxieties of life. And that day will close on you suddenly like a trap. For it will come on those who have lived on in the face of the whole earth. Be always on watch and pray that you may be able to escape. The happen and that you may be able to stand before the Son of Man. And I know sometimes, you know. You're dealing with un, unpleasant circumstances. People wanna go to the bar to get their minds off. People, some, some people succumb to drugs. So they can actually be relieved, have some kind of comfort. But that will never lead to the comfort of the Holy Spirit. It always leads to, um, destruction. Defamation of your character. And I'm going to read Luke, chapter twelve, verse thirty five through forty. Just to remind us, and, and it's a reminder for me, sometimes I'm in pain, like, okay. Let's just do this. I'll get my mind off things. Oh, let me just do this. Let me, and, and this is what Jesus is warning us about. So I know sometimes when we, um, are hit hard with painful trials, you probably. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it real. Oh, I'm gonna just go out to the party with the fellas or. Let's go out there and just, just take my mind off things. I have so much stress in my job and I, I can't deal with it, you know, but it's. A very clever trap. The bar tree and partying and all that. Oh, yeah, it, it, it feels good for the moment, but as always, you know. Hangover in the mix. But let's read, uh, Luke, chapter, um, twelve, verse thirty five to forty. And there we read. Be dressed ready for service and keep your lamps burning. Servants waiting for their master to return from a wedding banquet. So then when he comes and knocks, they can immediately open the door for him. It will be good for those servants whose masters find them watching when he comes. Truly, I tell you, he will dress himself to serve. Will have them recline at the table and, and will come and wait on them. It will be good for those servants whose master finds them ready, even if he comes in the middle of the night or toward daybreak. But understand this, if the owner of the house had known at what hour the thief was coming, he would not have let his house be broken into. You also must be ready because the Son of Man will come at an hour when you do not expect him. So. Right now. When you spread the gospel and you share with others. We have to be like wise managers, as is written in, uh, verse forty two. Whom the master puts in charge of his servants to give them their food allowance at the proper time. What does he mean by that? When preachers give the words of God. We're giving people allowance. We're giving them something to eat. We're giving them something to drink. But if we just. Drift off. Right? It will be good for that servant whom the master finds doing so when he returns. True, I tell you, he will put him in charge of all his possessions, but suppose the servant says to himself, ah. My master's taking a long time in coming. And then begins to beat the other servants, both men and women, and to eat and drink and get drunk. You gotta be dressing ready. You gotta be prayerful and watchful. And I know sometimes, and I'm going, I'm gonna keep it one hundred. Sometimes I'm like, I'm exhausted. I'm tired of praying. Oh, my goodness. I'm tired. I'm so tired. And usually. The time to pray is in the middle of the night. Oh, I'm just too tired. But that's what we have to do. We have to. Be mindful and, and, and be prayerful. Because, you know, temptation is knocking at the door and there's no time to be complacent. And I know, um, we need to. Uh, focus on that. You gotta focus on being prayerful and alert. So as we move on, I know, uh, I just wanted to get, um, those scriptures to you. You can't keep track, please don't worry. I have you here. I'll text him to Brother Scott. And he will send these verses for you to dig in and eat. When you. Have the time. So each day Jesus was teaching at the temple and each evening he went out to spend the night on the hill called the Mount of Olives. And all the people came early in the morning to hear him at the temple. So there you go. Jesus always prayed in the middle of the night so he can have a, um. Have communion with him. With the, with the Father. And that's the most intimate time to communicate with him with no distractions. Okay, now we're going to Luke, chapter twenty two. Now Luke, chapter twenty two, I'm gonna go through and, uh, we're gonna see that there's some, some prophecies that are being, uh, fulfilled. With, and, uh, mostly I, I'm seeing them in, uh, Zachariah, so let's just, um, read on and, um. This is, this is coming towards a climax. Of God's, um, mission on earth. The climax was to pay for our sins, to die the debt that we deserved. To suffer the penalty of the law of sin and death. Now the festival of unleavened bread, called the Passover, was approaching. And the chief priests and the teachers of the law were looking for some way to get rid of Jesus, but they were afraid of the people. Then Satan entered Jesus, Judas. Called the Scariot, one of the twelve. And Judas went to the chief priests and the officers of the temple guard and discussed with them how he might betray Jesus. They were delighted and agreed to give him money. He consented and watched for an opportunity to hand Jesus over to them when no crowd was present. Now we see here the plot to betray Jesus. Let's go to Zachariah, chapter eleven, verse twelve through thirteen, and then we're gonna go to Psalm forty one, verse nine. Zachariah, chapter eleven, verse twelve through thirteen. Zachariah, chapter eleven, verses twelve through thirteen. And there we read. I told them, if you think it best, give me my pay. But if not, keep it. So they paid me thirty pieces of silver. And the Lord said, this is Zachariah speaking. I told them, if you think it best, give me my pay, but if not, keep it. So they. Paid me thirty pieces of silver. And the Lord said to me. Throw it to the potter, the handsome price at which they valued me. And then he reads, then it's, then we read, so I took the thirty pieces of silver and threw them into the potter of the house of the Lord. Judas betrayed Jesus with thirty pieces of silver. So the Lord knows. He also taught, echoes this through the words of David in Psalm forty one, verse nine. And we see it is written. Psalm forty one, verse nine. Psalm forty one, verse nine. Again, it is written, even my close friends, someone I trusted, one who shared my bread, has turned against me. Some translation says lifted up his foot against me. Now I'm gonna dig deeper. You see Judas is a, 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 a shadow of Satan. And twelve is perfect government. So yes, Jesus is hurt. My prized. Creation, rent among the best. Was my close friend. Till he betrayed me for himself. So we see that illustrated through Judas. So as we read further down. Now, again, that, that's gonna be, um, hurtful and I, and I know as, as a follower of Jesus. As a disciple, as a believer, as a Christian, if you are truly a disciple. If you are truly walking, you're going to know what it feels like to be betrayed. And it's not gonna be betrayed by somebody out there in the street that you're not familiar with. You're gonna feel the betrayal when it's somebody that you have been intimately involved with. But that's the transformation process. That's how we know we're being conformed to the image of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. You see that exemplified in Joseph's life. He was betrayed by his brothers. You see Jeremiah betrayed by the priests and the people of his time and the kings. Oh, we, we, we going to have. Oh, we 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 going to have to drink that cup. Oh, yeah. You have to drink that cup. There's no way around it. So let's um read further down in Luke chapter twenty-two. And uh. Luke chapter twenty-two. Alright, let's go back. I know we're going back and forth. Okay. Then came the day of unleavened bread, on which the Passover lamb had to be sacrificed. Jesus sent Peter and John saying, go ahead, make preparations for us to eat the Passover. Where do you want us to prepare for it? They asked. He replied, as you enter the city, a man carrying a jar of water will meet you. Follow him to the house that he enters and say to the owner of the house. The teacher asked, where is the guest room? Where I may eat my Passover with my disciples. He will show them a large room upstairs and all furnished. Make preparations there. They left and found things just as Jesus said told them, so they prepared the Passover. When the hour came, Jesus and his apostles reclined at the table. And he said to them, I eagerly desire to eat this Passover with you before I suffer. For I tell you, I will not eat again until it finds fulfillment in the kingdom of God. Now, just to let you know, um. To the disciples and to Jesus, this is not the Last Supper. This is just a Passover meal that they've been celebrating since Passover in Egypt. You see, the Passover lamb is Jesus. And if you. If you can remember, they had these lambs, the lamb was with the family, it was something that they picked a strange lamb. This lamb grew up in the family and it was time for them to. Sacrifice that lamb and put the blood on the doorposts. That Passover lamb is Jesus. So after taking the cup, he gave thanks and said, take this and divide it among you. But I tell you, I will not drink again from the fruit of the vine until the kingdom of God comes. And he took the bread, gave thanks and broke it. And gave it to them, saying, this is my body given for you. Do this in remembrance of me. In the same way, after the supper took um supper, he took the cup, saying, this cup. New covenant in my blood, which is poured out for you. But for the hand of him is going to betray me, is with mine on the table. This is Judas. And we read that already in Psalm four. The son of man will go as it has, as has been decreed, but woe to that man who betrays him. They began to question among themselves which which of them it might be who would do this. A dispute also rose among them as to which of them was considered to be the greatest. Jesus said to them, the kings and the Gentiles lorded over them, and those who exercised authority over them called themselves benefactors. But you are not to be like that. Instead, the greatest among you should be like the youngest and the one who rules like the one who serves. For who is greater, the one who is at the table or the one who serves? Is it not the one who is at the? But I am among you as one who serves. You are those who have stood by me, by my, in my trials. So. I know I hear arguments, oh, yeah, who's a great, who's a goat, who's a goat, my. John James, Kobe Bryant, oh, yeah, he's a greatest, oh, he's a great, you see his stats? But in God's eyes, as we read in Romans, chapter twelve, when we make, when we worship God and we make our lives a living sacrifice. And put others first. That is the greatest. I wouldn't, I'm just assuming, in God's eyes, the water boy. Or the one who takes the town, wipes the court. After somebody falls, he's considered the greatest. He's putting others before himself. That is the grace in God's eyes. We're gonna see in uh Philippians, chapter two, verse six. And Jesus says that I'm here to serve, right? So when we read here. We see that. God. Is worshiped because. He suffered. It's written. I'll read from verse five to go in to these verses so you can have a clear understanding. In your relationships with one another, have the same mind as Jesus. Nature God, did not consider equality with God something to be used to his own advantage. Rather, he made himself nothing by taking the ver- of a sermon, of a servant. Being made in human likeness. And uh as the human pride, we see some. They want to take advantage of the. And they want to uh abuse the people, oppress the people to serve their greedy appetites. And these greedy appetites are advertised with a so-called lavish life. But that's not considered the greatest in God's eyes. And uh we're gonna um. So, okay, we'll we'll make the good timing. Alright. You are those who have stood by me in my trials. So if Jesus had trials, of course, we are going to have trials. And I confer on you a kingdom just as my Father conferred one on me. So that you may eat and drink at my table in my kingdom and sit on thrones judging the twelve tribes of Israel. Simon, Simon. Satan is asked to sip to. But I pray for you. Simon, that your faith may not fail. And when you have turned back, strengthen your brothers. But he replied, Lord, I'm ready to go with you to prison and to death. And Jesus answered, I tell you, Peter, before the rooster crows today, you will deny. Me three times. You'll deny that you know me, you'll deny three times that you know me. Then Jesus asked him, when I sent you without purse, bag, or sandals, did you lack anything? Nothing, they answered. He said to them, but now if you have a purse, take it and also a bag. And if you don't have a sword, sell your cloak and buy one. It is written. Numbered with the transgressors, and I tell you that in the, in this must be fulfilled in me. Yes, what is written about me is reaching its fulfillment. The disciple said, see, Lord, here are two swords. That's enough, he replied. Well, some people will be scratching their heads, well. When Simon Peter cut off the 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 priest servant's ear off. He said, those who live by the sword die by the sword. Why would he say that? When he's commanding disciples to sell everything they have and and get and get some swords. I I mentioned briefly earlier this morning to Scott. And we know that um that Peter rebuked, I mean, he rebuked Jesus heavily. And Jesus said, I'm gonna be handed over to sinners. I'm going to die. And Peter rebuked him, said, it's not gonna happen. Jesus in response says, get behind me, Satan. You're concerned about human concern, you're concerned with human, the human will rather than God's will. You've been a stumbling block to me. When you read the Bible, the Holy Spirit will let you understand that, yes, Peter struck. The guard, cutting his ear off. And to make that prediction come to pass. Peter, yes, you will deny me three times. And then the, the the rooster will crawl. We're gonna see who that third person was who questioned about him. About his association with Jesus. And the first time he said, I don't know this man. What are you talking about? I don't know. And out of fear, let's read. And then I'm gonna go back to. But I wanted to let you understand. Why it was done so that we be thinking about us. Our sins brought them to the cross, but Jesus is very strategic. And carrying out the Father's will and the plan has to stay intact. Yes, he could have called legions of angels to prevent the arrest. Yes, he could have. He could have refrained from ordering the, commanding the disciples to get um swords. But we're we're gonna see here. In John chapter, um later in John, in the book of John. And there we read. Just spare me one moment. Okay. John, chapter eighteen. Jesus is saying, this happened so that the words he had spoken would be fulfilled. I have not lost one of those you gave me. Then Simon Peter, who had a sword, drew it and struck the high priest's servant, cutting off his right ear. The servant's name was Malchus. Then Jesus commanded Peter, put your sword away. Shall I not drink the cup the Father has given me? So if you understand, Peter has a passionate love for his Savior, but he's looking through human lens. Not Godly lens. So then now when we go further. Malchus had his ear cut off. This third person. Who was questioning Peter of his association with Jesus. Some said, huh, your accent gives you away. You're a Galilean. You're one of his disciples. I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know who, I don't know who he is. This is in John, chapter eighteen, verse twenty-six. One of the high priest's servants, a relative of a man whose ear Peter had cut off, challenged him. Did I see you with him in the garden? Again, Peter denied it. And at that moment, a rooster began to crow. To keep this plan intact. God saw. Allow that for Peter to weep bitterly. So. This cup that he's supposed to drink. Will not be interrupted. And now, as we see, another scripture is being fulfilled. All the, all the disciples started to flee. Strike the shepherd, and we see in Zachariah, chapter thirteen, verse seven. Zachariah has a lot of uh some prophecies here being fulfilled. And we see thirteen, verse seven, awake sword against my shepherd, against the man who is close to me, declares the Lord Almighty. Strike the shepherd and the sheep will be scattered, and I will turn my hand on on my hand against the little ones. And um that's the eye open right now. Scattered the sheep, right? But the good Lord says also. I have not lost one of these you've given me. So the sheep that was scattered, they left. Some left naked. Peter wept bitterly. And we starting to see. The prophecies being fulfilled. Now this cup that Jesus is talking about is death. And we see um. According to prophecy that Jesus. Our Lord, Father, is talking to the devil. And he's saying that this cup is gonna be passed on to you. You are going to die, pretty much. But as we know, our Lord and Savior died and rose again. And we see here echoed in Habakkuk, chapter two. Verse sixteen. It is written, this is to the devil, so think, this is to the devil. You'll be filled with shame instead of glory. Now, it is your turn. Drink and let your nakedness be exposed. The cup. Right hand is coming around to you, and disgrace will cover your glory. This cup. Is a very, very bitter cup. Suffering, bear being plucked out. People mocking and spitting, flogging, clothes being stripped. People making bets on what clothes they're gonna get. Jerry and mockery. This is the cup. That Jesus is talking about. Jesus went out as usual to the Mount of Olives and the disciples followed him. On reaching the place, he said to them, pray that you will not fall into temptation. He withdrew by a stone throw beyond them, knelt down and prayed, Father, if you're willing, take this cup for me. Yet not my will, but yours be done. An angel from heaven appeared to him and strengthened him, and being in anguish, he prayed more earnestly. And his sweat was like drops of blood falling on the ground. When he rose from prayer and went back to his disciples, he found them asleep, exhausted, exhausted from sorrow. Why are you sleeping? He asked them. Get up and pray so that you will not fall into temptation. Now, while he was still speaking, the crowd came up and and a man who was called Judas, one of the twelve, was leading them. He approached Jesus to kiss him, but Jesus asked him, Judas, are you betraying the son of man with a kiss? When Jesus' followers saw that what was going to happen, they said, Lord, should we strike with our swords? And one of them struck the servant of the high priest, cutting off his right ear. As we know, that was Peter. But Jesus answered, no, more of this. And he touched the man's ear and healed him. Then Jesus said to the chief priests, the officers of the temple guard, and the elders who had come for him. Am I leading a rebellion that you have come with swords and clubs? Every day I was with you in the temple courts, and you did not lay a hand on me, but this is your hour when darkness reigns. Again, we read about Peter denying crap. As we go further down. The men who were guarding Jesus began mocking him, beating him. They blindfolded him and demanded. Prophecy, who hits you? And they said many other insulting things to him. Sharing in Christ's sufferance. He was blindfolded, right? Let's think about it. Samson, his eyes were plucked out, couldn't see. That is an example of being conformed to Christ's image. You're sharing in his sufferance. You are drinking the cup. That he had to drink. Let's read these uh verses um here. And it's being fulfilled. So they blindfolded him. Prophecy. Who struck you? Mocking him. Let's go to Psalm thirty eight, verse thirteen to fourteen. Thirty eight, thirteen through fourteen. I'm like the deaf who cannot hear. Like the mute who cannot speak. I've become like one who does not hear, whose mouth can offer no reply. Again. Psalm thirty nine, verses one through three. I said, I will watch my ways and keep my tongue from sin. I will put a muzzle on my mouth. While in the presence of the wicked, so I remained utterly silent, not even saying anything good. But my anguish increased. My heart grew hot within me. While I meditated, the fire burned. Then I spoke with my tongue, and this is what he spoke with his tongue. I'm gonna just hold on to that note. He's burning with passion. Kept his mouth closed in the presence of the wicked, because the wicked twist your words and they say this. To manipulate you and to get their way. That's what the wicked do, but now. What he held inside was burning inside of him. He's holding his lips. No reply. At daybreak, the council of the elders of the people, both the chief priests and the teachers of the law, met together, and Jesus was led before them. If you are the Messiah, they said, tell us. And Jesus answered, I tell you, you will not believe me. And I asked you, you would not answer, but from now on. This is when he was burning, kept his mouth closed. Now on, the Son of Man will be seated at the right hand of the mighty God. And they all asked, are you then the Son of God? He replied, you say that I am. Then they said, why do we need any more testimony? We have heard it from his own lips. Some accounts in Matthew, um. When he was questioned by this, one of the priests, Sanhedrin. And the high priest said to him, I charge you under oath by the living God. Tell us if you are the Messiah, the Son of God. You have said so, you, um, you have said so. Jesus replied, but I say to you, say to all of you, from now on, you will see the Son of Man. Sitting at the right hand of the mighty coming from the clouds of heaven. Then the high priest tore his clothes and said, he has spoken blasphemy. Why do we need any more witnesses? Look now, you have heard the blasphemy. What you, what, what do you think? So yes, now we're gonna go to Psalm thirty nine, verse one through three. You know, they're questioning him. Are you the Messiah? And he kept his mouth shut. He stayed quiet, but this is just to fulfill scriptures again. And you know, when, when we are born again, we are going to. Share. His thoughts. You know, David said, they passed my hands and my feet. How would he know that if he didn't have? The mind of Christ. The Spirit of Christ. And I'm gonna read First Corinthians. I can't know your thoughts unless I have your spirit. I can't understand, I can't calculate and see, hmm, what is Brian saying about me? But if we have the same spirit, I'll understand clearly what Brian thinks of me. And that's why when we read the scriptures, hey, I never knew you, but gone for me, ye were work, you workers of iniquity. I never knew you. Meaning the truth is not in you. I'm not in you. You can never know, you can know the devil and the, and the, and the demons, they know about God, but they, they don't know him intimately. And I'll read to you again. This is how you know that the treasure, the hope of glory is living inside of you. Let's go to First Corinthians, chapter two. There we read. Verse ten. The Spirit searches all things, even the deep things of God. For who knows a person's thoughts except their own spirit within them? In the same way, no one knows the thoughts of God except the Spirit of God. So David knows the thoughts of God because he had the Spirit of God. So when you see, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? How would David know that? Because he has the Spirit of God. And nobody knows the mind of God. But the Spirit. So when we see that we are sharing in his afflictions, and we see that we're going through trial after trial. We seeing that we're being ridiculed by family members and relatives and being, uh. Being rejected and people thinking that we are bigots and we're thrown in prison and whatever the case may be. You know, it's not you. They attacking the Christ in you. You could do nothing. I can do nothing. Matthew can do nothing. Scott can do nothing. Karen can do nothing. It's the living treasure that's in you, the gift of God. I want to just come to a close. And. I'm praying that these. Which are helping me are helping you to have a deeper insight. Of our master. No student is above his master. If this, if our master suffered rejection, ridicule, he's a man of many sorrows. Me too have to go through that. And it's human nature. We love to have a sense of belonging. We love to have the approval of men, but it's warned to us. Now that we know we've been chosen out of the world, we're going to be rejected and hated. Why? Because the world hated first. They're gonna try and twist your words. They're gonna try and say, well, you know, you just gotta. Do this. And be the way the world is. Accept this practice. You know how it is, but we, we got this particular lesson of, um, two evils. Well, I don't, you know, example, I, I don't, I don't like homosexuality, but you know what, they're people too, and then, you know, we, we need to. Vote for this person because you know, he's making sure that we get money in our pockets. It's okay. If he or she. Condoons this conduct. It's okay. It's all right. But we have to be on guard and understand that following Jesus, yes, it's not, it's not an easy walk. It's, it's, they're gonna be times you're going to be exhausted. There can be times that you, it's beyond your human ability to go on. But then we read in Second Corinthians that even when we come to our end, we see that. The power of God's, of God, the power of God's resurrection. Of him raising Jesus from the dead will be. Will be reflected in our lives. We, we too, when we come to our end, our wits end. We realize that it is by grace. His grace is sufficient. I can't make my strength my God. I can't make my intelligence my God. I got to align him. Like a little child. So there we come to a close. Now we, we've come to a close. It's, um. We see what was weighed on the scale. And we see that our Savior. Was making sure that the plans. Were intact. Being fulfilled. And I'm gonna tell you why it's a fight, because the truth cannot just be the truth for today or the next day. It's everlasting. It cannot be. It cannot go to the left or the right. And I know the enemy's strategy is to be aggressive. Well, you said this is gonna happen. It didn't happen, so then you know longer the truth. So that's why. This plan. It's very important. It's a perfect plan. Can't be thwarted. It cannot be thwarted. And we see that the enemy tried to kill Jesus as a baby, just when he tried to kill Moses as a baby. We see that the enemy is trying to. Detrone God in a losing cause. He's defeated. But the truth is the truth. The truth is the solid rock. Lives come to an end, does not. If anybody has any questions, any concerns. Feel free to come to the table. But again, as a reminder, I'm gonna send you these verses, uh, via text. And, and again. That's your own time. You can read and, and pray on these scriptures. And, and again, as I, I mentioned to you, it's last week, um, last week, if you have any scriptures. If you have any other verses that you would love to share with us. And give all of us deeper insight of the truth. Please feel free to do so. It will be highly appreciated. But that's it for me, and, uh, I'm Brother Scott. Um, and you can continue on.
Thank you. Thank you, Brother Lyndon. Um, as Brother Lyndon had alluded to, are there any questions, comments, or concerns that anyone has? Please, please bring it to the floor so that we can, um. Again, you know, just get everyone's. Um, input. Onto the, uh, to the, to the study. So that we can all grow. Knowledge, wisdom, and understanding. Of the things that our Father would have for us to do. Um, once again, any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, so with that in mind. Beloved brethren, the central issue of life is what we believe about Jesus. Other spiritual questions are irrelevant unless we first decide to believe that Jesus is his, he is, is who he claims to be. The religious leaders of his day. They could not do it. They refused to accept Jesus. His identity as a Son of God. As God, the Son, as a Savior and the Messiah of the world. As the only way, the truth, and the life to God. Today, the religious leaders are no different. Beloved, once again, Luke, chapter nineteen, verses fourteen and twenty seven. Let us read that again to get the, 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 the absolute importance of it. Once again, we're looking at Luke, chapter fourteen, excuse me, Luke, chapter nineteen. Verses fourteen and twenty seven. But his citizens hated him and sent a message after him, saying, we will not have this man to reign over us. Verse twenty seven. But those mine enemies which should not, excuse me, which would not that I should reign over them. Bring them here and slay them before me. Beloved. Please, please understand, please get it into our thinking, please get it into. Our way of life and our living. That without Jesus, we can do nothing. We will do nothing. We may live a full, healthy life. Job goes on to explain how those who are wicked and godless. They, 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 they don't lose anything early on in life. They live to be ripe old age. Their children just gains their inheritance, and they pass it on from generation to generation to generation. But God has his eye on these ones, and their destruction is intimate. So beloved brethren. If. You have love for your family, friends, relatives, and concerns. Please get the gospel into them. Invite them to our Bible study. And if you don't feel that you wanna invite them to our Bible study, then please invite them to. Any faithful ministry. There are a lot of faithful ministries, um, in the internet. There's a lot of faithful churches out there. Just please get yourselves and your loved ones into, into, into paradise, like I mentioned earlier. I love my wife. I love my children. But the journey will end here. If I, again, let me single out I, if I'm not a, 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 a child of God. I'll be sent to hell, God forbid, and I'll never be able to spend eternity with my wife and children. And I wanna spend eternity with my wife and children, because I not only love them, I like them, and I like their presence and their company. But more importantly, I love the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. So beloved brethren, if you love your loved ones, please get them to Christ. Please, as we read in certain passages in Luke, Matthew, and Mark, our loved ones came to Jesus in behalf of their families. You please go to Jesus on behalf of your family. So without further ado, um, again, if there's any questions, comments, and concerns. If there aren't, uh, Sister Gail, can you bring tonight's study to a closing prayer?
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Okay. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this Bible study tonight, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for us learning of you, oh God. You're worthy and you're worthy to be praised, oh God. We ask, oh God, that you touch each and every one of us, oh God. In the name of Jesus. Keep us, Lord. Bless our families, Lord. In the name of Jesus, touch the hosts and the co-hosts right now, oh God. Be with their families right now, oh God. Give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of your word, oh God. In the name of Jesus, let us rest well and have sweet dreams of you, oh God. You said, if you keep your mind on Jesus. He will give you perfect peace. We thank you, Lord, for your goodness, your mercy, and your grace on us, oh God. We just thank you, Lord, for your keeping power, oh Lord. We thank you, Lord. You are merciful, oh God. We ask, oh God, that you just have us back next week, oh God. You said, if your name be lifted up, you draw all men unto you, oh God. Draw them in, oh God. Increase us in numbers, oh God. In the name of Jesus. Forgive us of any faults and wrongdoings and wrong sayings, or if we have ard against anybody, oh God. Take it out of us, oh God. In the name of Jesus, we repent of all ungodness, sin, known and unknown sins, presumption, sin, secret faults, and everything not pleasing in your sight, oh God. We just thank you, Lord. You've been so good to us. You're worthy to be praised, oh God. Give us a restful night, oh God. Bless us on our jobs. Keep our families covered under the blood of Jesus. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sister Gail. And thank you, everyone in attendance this evening. Um, again, to echo Brother Lyndon's words, I hope that these studies are really benefiting you. And like Lyndon and I often repeat. We're not only. And like Lyndon and I often repeat, we're not only, uh, teachers, we're students as well, and we hope, we really, really hope that as we're taking these, these intimate and in-depth studies into God's Word, that they're really, they're just not uh, great stories or, um, identifying of, of, of the different characters, that they're really impacting your life and really, really changing you. And, um, beloved, we have eternity, we have eternity to gain and this world to lose. So beloved, please let us just lose this world, because we're gonna turn it loose at the day of our death. We gotta, we gotta get that into our thinking. At the day of our death, whatever this world has to offer will be let go. That which is in Christ, that will be for eternity. So let us please set our eyes and our sights on the biggest picture, the bigger picture, that is our Lord, our Savior, Jesus Christ, his God, our Father, Jehovah, and he, the Holy Spirit. From my family, as well as the Mason family, to each and every one of y'all's family, we bid you love, good night, and till we see y'all again next week, Saturday. Actually, um, Lyndon will be bringing this marvelous lovely book of Luke to a close. And the following Saturday, we'll go back to the Old Testament book of that wonderful book called Numbers. So we're going to, uh, next Saturday, we're going to touch twenty one, twenty two. And as Lyndon does, twenty three and twenty four, that will bring this marvelous book of Luke to a close. And once again, the following Saturday, we'll be opening in the book of Numbers. So please read the scriptures as you're able, um, you might have to just carve out some time in your busy schedule. Um, like I made mention before, Lyndon and I, we have both of our hands full. We're husbands, we're fathers, we're employees. Um, we're also friends, if anyone needs to call and talk with us throughout the week, hey, Brother Scott, I got a question. I got a comment or concern, um, I really didn't feel comfortable doing it in Bible study. Y'all can call us, y'all have our numbers, I'll give you Lyndon's numbers, I'll resend all of our numbers, both of our numbers to all of you. And, um, let's just, let's just, let's just get to glory together, beloved ones. So once again, from the Mason household and the Foster household, to each and every one of y'all's household, we bid y'all a lovely, lovely good night, and good night to all.
Uh, good night.
All right now.
Be safe, y'all.